So one tonight. Okay. And so one, I'm here now. Excuse me. Thank you for being here to the Florisville City Council Regular Meeting for September the 12th, two thousand and eighteen. I do call this meeting to order. If the audience and the members and those in the council chambers rise for our invocation, follow our pledge of allegiance. And we have Pastor Alasal down there tonight.
Thank you, Lord, for sending such wonderful men and women here tonight. Who have dedicated their lives and their time to making this city a better place. We know that these jobs as leaders, they're sacred. They make decisions here, Lord, that affect the lives of so many people. So we ask tonight, Lord, that you would fill us with wisdom and with courage. And more than anything, we ask that your will, what we do, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We do have a floor for tonight's meeting. All of the council is in attendance, except for Councilwoman Martinez. At this time, I'll open the floor for any citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone from our community to address the council. Okay. If not, moving on to item one A, old business consideration action to approve the minutes, meaning the meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on August the twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. Counsel, you have in your packet the minutes. I'll give you a moment before I entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on August the twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
I have a, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Item one B, consideration action to approve the meeting minutes for the special council meeting on August the twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
I move to approve the minutes for the special council meeting on August the twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to our presentation, kind of standard on our agendas, Spectrum update. Hope to have.
Not too much today, unfortunately, Mayor. I sent out an email to Mr. Barry King with Spectrum requesting some dates, Mayor. I still have not heard back from him, but I'm hoping to get it made. This should be our last and final meeting with the city and between the city and Spectrum. And hopefully at this meeting, we'll finally start talking numbers, concrete numbers.
Were they able to get all the documentation that they were asking for?
They did.
Great.
We do have representative from Spectrum. On the community side, I'll be meeting with myself as well as Barcom, which is our IT people. One of the things that we have is a current transit agreement that they're supposed to be providing some things about TV. And I remember when we were struggling with Spectrum, there's a channel and those kind of things. So she's going to be meeting with me, the representative, and Barcom, our IT people, on Monday with the city secretary, so we can start that conversation. She's from the community development side, is now that they're finished and they're selling, and so they're going to present that. So as soon as she brings those things and information to us about the different options that we can use, what we can, what is available to us, because we now have Spectrum, I'll be bringing it back to the council.
Is that one of the channels that we can put all our information on like the other cities do?
Yes, yes. They have provided your own Florisville channel. And so the reason why we're meeting with them and the IT, because there's cameras and there's training and things as a quarter. And so that's where we're starting that conversation. But yes, and you can put anything out there except for like a commercial, but it's your own TV. So even our wonderful meetings, we can have there. Other people's meetings, we can broadcast, community information meetings, we can have a, you know, share about how you can file your taxes or whatever. So those kind of community things, we're going to start that conversation.
That'll be great. Great. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, item three A, consideration action to add Gonzalez de La Barza as another approved engineer for the city of Florisville. And our city manager, I'll let you.
Oh, yes, I'm not going to steal that from you, Mayor. Here to present, but we made the city council. The city of Florisville currently has immense spectrum. We do use, interpret, I'm sorry, Intrepid for a lot of our new engineers. You could approve another engineering firm for just a project that we did. The council, we're supposed to part of that selection. And so as we're looking at doing some new projects going forward and some new grants that we're applying for, we may want to spread our expertise and to look at other engineering firms. One of the things that's going to be happening with our annexation that's going to be effective October the one, twenty nineteen, is that we have to look at what we call our CCN, which is what our values that we serve work for, and we haven't updated that in some time. So now it's time for us to update that. We also have a component of that, your attorney can attach to it, a service maintenance program that we have to provide for services for communities that we are now taking in. And so we need an engineering firm to talk about what we're going to do, streets and things such as that. They aren't local, but others can present. We have to represent to you. And they can present.
Yep. You will approach the microphone.
You have some information that you provided in your packet.
I'm Melissa Killen, Gonzalez de La Barza, and Eddie De La Gosta. He's the principal engineer. There is information in your packet. GD is about thirteen years old and based in San Antonio with offices, like in your packet, El Paso, McGowan, Oklahoma City, but most of our work is here in San Antonio. We're right down the highway, about thirty minutes away, easy to get to, and do have expertise in water, wastewater, dealing with cities, dealing with textile, in the Department of Authority, San River Authority, any type of regulatory agency that you will need to deal with. In addition to fiber, utilities, you know, pretty much any plating, annexation, anything that a city would need, we definitely have that expertise. So I'll let Mr. De La Gosta just fill you in a little bit more on qualifications.
Sure. Good evening, and thanks for having us here. Just a little bit about us, real brief, we've been in business for about thirteen years. Started off with just doing civil engineering for mainly public entities and agencies and cities, municipalities as itself. So we grew to just not only do civil engineering for public agencies, but also doing surveying services and general construction. So a little bit about us is that we have experience with even design build projects with core engineers. We do a lot of work for textile. So our background is mainly with public agencies. So like this, like this killer mentioned, that we have worked in the past with textile and other city agencies and Edward's Department of Authority. We certainly understand the permitting requirements and the design requirements and even construction requirements that are associated with very complex projects that you may come across. So that being said, any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. Sure. What's your strong points, as in roads, drainage, or what?
What's our background? I used to work for textile when I started out after graduating from college. I learned quite a bit. So I would say, yes, roads and drainage are our strong points when it comes to design. We even have a, an infrastructure group who just mainly focuses on water and sewer design. So we have different, I guess, divisions within our company that focus on water sewer and transportation type projects. And then we have our construction division, which, you know, mainly focuses on general construction projects. And we have, for instance, we have a public safety headquarters. We're general contractors, we're the lead contractor for the city of Eagle Pass. They're building a police station and a fire station, and we're the general contractors out there. And so it's about three months, three to four months away from completion. So we have different arms within, within the company.
So because of many regulating and kind of restructuring, the permits department, the planning and zoning, would your company be helping us in those directions, too, if we needed?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We do have experience in that as well.
Any other questions by the council? Any simple answer questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have all the agenda council, consideration action to add Gonzalez de La Barza as another approved engineer for the city of Florisville.
I'm going to go ahead and move to add Gonzalez de La Barza as another engineer approved.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome to Florisville. Moving on to item three B, consideration action to appoint members to the EDC board to include a reappointment of current members, appoint to fill vacancies and or replace existing members. Councilman, you do put this on the agenda? Councilman, you have a second?
What was that?
EDC.
Yes.
Three D.
Yeah, no, I understand. I nominate Ray Lambert to.
I'll second. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I have a motion on the floor to appoint Ray Lambert to the vacancy on the EDC board. Also have a second. Do I have any citizens' comments pertaining to this? Yes, Mr. Gonzalez.
Mayor, council, Ray Gonzalez, Florisville, and member of the EDC board. I think Mr. Lambert is, has all the desirable qualities to be on that board. He has significant experience on the board itself, being president for a lengthy period of time, and he is very well attached to the business community, and is one of us meeting, has lived in Florisville for a long time. I recommend him highly.
Thank you. Is there a reason why we didn't get any applications for this?
Mr. Lambert's application is on file. He's already on your attorney board of the field, so he is, his application is on file. We have his information. He's already expressed interest in this committee, and he has said he'd be willing to serve.
Any other citizens' comments? Any more, any comments or questions by council? Okay. I have a motion and a second on the floor for Mr. Ray Lambert to fill EDC's vacancy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Four zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item three C, consideration action to appoint two council members to the census committee.
Again, you've been hearing me say a whole lot of time, get up the count, get up the count, it's time for us to get up the count. So the council has actually already approved this little committee. We don't have anybody on the committee. I'm trying to get some people to come. We're going to have training next week on the nineteenth of the census. Eighteenth? Thursday, eighteen. So we're going to have training. So we're going to have to do it there. We have the library, librarian, she's going to come, and hopefully we can apply her to the committee, go get volunteers. But all the committee, by ordinance, you will agree to have two council members to be representative of, for the census. And so I need you to tell me who those two are, so that I can start. Now, along the same line, because I am talking about census, so attorney stuff, you know, there is an application for a grant to help us to fund. Now, we need to do this, I don't have to tell you how important the census is, because we need to get up the count, because the city of Florisville, as well as the county, was undercounted by twenty-four percent. It affects our schools, funding that we can receive, so it's really important. And once it happens, we don't get a chance to do this again in the year twenty thirty. And so looking at that, we need to be able to say that these are the people for the committee, so I need to, if we're applying for that, to say, these council members will be serving the committee as well as the public. And so I'm just looking for two council members, so that we can start this process. And I'll bring the grant application back to you, once we start the process.
Counsel, any questions or comments about this? Any citizens' comments? Any volunteers?
Well, you said the committee, how does the committee plan to meet?
The committee's going to meet on the absentee basis, but right now, what I need you to be able to do is say that we have two council members who have said, because we established the committee, that they're going to be representing, so I can put your names in the application I'm putting on right now.
I'll volunteer.
Thank you so much.
Can you say training is next week?
Training is next week. Send an interview and send in information. If you can't meet the meeting, then we can send it. Show me that I can do everything via internet and also video.
Okay, great.
I'll volunteer, give the council some choose.
Okay.
So does that do it?
Yes, we're coming on two.
Okay. So do we need to make, we need to make a motion on the two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to put Marissa Martinez and Ms. Eddie Meyer, C.C. Gonzalez, report on the census committee.
I have a second. I have a motion by Mrs. Cantu, a second by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. And we're looking forward to getting a vote. Just so that you know, that the grant that we're applying for is to help us get funding, because there's no funding that the program gives for advertising, marketing, those kind of things, we're going to be advertising for a grant. Okay.
Now, moving on to item D, consideration action to approve the city council meetings for the months of October, November, and December.
Okay. So it is time for us to, we're about to get to our holiday mode. And so as you look at the calendar, we need to look at adjusting peanut festival's going to be happening. And so we're asking to cancel the meeting on October tenth and schedule the meeting, the only one meeting we're having for the month of October, to be on the twenty-fourth. In November, we're asking to only have the meeting on the twenty, on the fourteenth because of the holiday. And then December, we're asking to have it December twelfth. This typically happens this time of year because of how it dispels. And so we're asking for you all to approve the cancellation.
I have a comment, though, before you make a motion. You know, considering the adopted budget that we're going to put into place in October, there's this ninety-day trial period. You know, we would like to have everything go back to the way it was with receiving financials monthly. My opinion is having one meeting a month, I feel like it really is not enough for us to get city business done. And I understand there's holidays, but when you look at it for three months, it's just, it's almost a quarter of a year, and we're only going to meet three times a year.
Well, I have been working on that transition for that position. Met with her actually today. She has these dates. She will be attending all three of those meetings and giving updates as we go forward, and we're making this transition. If you would like to schedule a special meeting, because you have to remember, these are meetings that we have set by your charter, like the second and fourth, so these are meetings set forth. If you care to have a special meeting, you may do so. But these are actually talking about the set meetings. If you want to have a call meeting, you can have to give us a sign up for a special meeting, and we can schedule that, if the council wants to have additional meetings.
Any other questions or comments about either citizens or council? I believe I have a motion. I believe I have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Got a motion, and do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Four zero. Moving on to consider, item E, consideration action to approve the twenty-twenty city of Florisville holidays.
Okay. So council, normally right after the budget, we pass the budget as the council will decide. These are our holidays for the twenty-twenty budget year. As you know, we've already eliminated the peanut festival that happened, but the first time it's going to happen for the first time this year. There's a typo for the last one, Friday, January first, twenty twenty-one. I've got to get used to typing that. I just got used to the twenty-twenty, now we're typing twenty twenty-one. But these are the normal holidays that we have. We're not asking to remove any or add any, so we're asking you to approve these for our next fiscal year.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. One question is, have we met with peanut festival, or are they aware of the fact that they're not closing Thursday and Friday?
Oh, yes. Now, we've met with them several different times. On that, we'll be having another meeting because of the fencing gentleman that's coming to fence. The fencing will start on the day of the peanut festival, which is that Wednesday. We'll let the door, they'll leave us open, so that people can get in and out. I think it'll probably take the public a little while to realize that we're not going to be closed on Thursday, later. We'll maybe do that. Yes, ma'am, we have met with the president actually.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Passes four zero. And item F, consideration and action to approve the twenty nineteen taco trample run.
Yes, ma'am. In your package, you have Sawyer and information about the taco trample. This is, I believe, their third year. We've met with the police department, they called it textile, they're not doing it. And all they're asking, actually, they're not asking for any closures or any type of, it's about twenty minutes to run a five K and another thirty minutes to run a ten K. I don't do either one. But they have met, and they're asking for your permission, they're asking for any donations, or they're just asking your permission to approve for them to continue to work with the police department, and they have met with the deputy chief.
So they don't need no road closure or anything?
No, they just need escorts, like something similar to what we did with the Knights of Columbus. So they're asking for your permission to do that.
Any other motion by council?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion on the floor. Any citizens' comments, particular, before I take a floor. If not, do I have a second? I second. Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Four zero. Item G, consideration action to approve a procurement policy for the city of Florisville that is sponsored by Councilwoman Martinez, who is not here tonight.
We can have table that, Miss.
Yes, please do. I'll entertain a motion, is that by, by Councilwoman Cantu to table item G. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Moving on to executive session, executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, chapter five five one. Section section four A, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven four of the Texas Government Code, personnel matters to deliver any employment, employment evaluation, preassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a corporate officer or employee in regards to our city manager evaluation. And Mrs. Turner has chosen to have this in open session.
Yes, thank you.
That is correct. Madam Mayor, if I may, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to read each section that the council evaluated the city manager. Thereafter, I'm going to give you an average number as to that section. I will also be giving you comments that were made by the council. Okay? The first one deals with, it says, management of the organization, effectively runs the operations of the organization, creates a cooperative, team-building environment for staff, recognizes the accomplishments of staff and other agencies working on behalf of the city, supports professional growth and opportunity within the organization, accepts full accountability for staff and the outcome of city projects or decisions, identifies organizational problems, and takes remedial action. Okay? On that section, the best score that you could get is six, is outstanding, five is an excellent, four is good, very good, excuse me, three is good, two is fair, one is poor, zero, of course, is unsatisfactory. On that one, the average this evening is a two point four. Okay? I am going to read comments regarding that particular section. It says, the city manager has neglected this area. Staff members have been unrecognized. Outcome of city projects or decisions have not been effectively communicated with the city council. Moving on to number two, execution of policy. Understands and complies with policies and procedures governing this city. Implement city policy fairly and consistently, based upon council decisions, goals, and applicable laws and regulations. Works towards accomplishing identified council goals, departments, other organizations, and the community. Once again, you give the same point system, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, oh, unsatisf, well, zero unsatisfactory, I call it a no. On that one, it's a two point oh. Okay? And number two, the, the comment indicates, there have been several departments that have gone unsupervised and have resulted in a financial loss to the city, such as bad accounting methods. Goals of this city council have not been met or followed. Moving on to number three. Number three deals with financial management. Properly prepares and manages the budget. Demonstrates ingenuity and creativity in approaching budgetary matters involving long-range revenues and expenditures for the organization. Once again, possible scores, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, and zero for unsatisfactory. On number three, the average score is a one point six. Comments with number three indicate, the budget and budgetary matters have been handled very badly for the city. This has resulted in a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. There have been little to no explanation regarding the severe problem given by the city manager to the city council. I also did not appreciate receiving the budget numbers on the day that the budget needed to be approved. I constantly asked for numbers, and they were not given to me until the last minute. Additional comment, council does not have a clear picture of the city's financial status. This hindered our planning for budget. Council should not have received the draft copy of the budget the day they were expected to approve. Moving on to number four. That deals with relations with the council. Provides regular updates to the council, keeping them informed about current and critical issues. Makes it an effort to be accessible to council members. Handles issues that are brought by the council in a consistent and timely manner. Maintains an honest, truthful, and professional relationship with each council member. Keeps a positive attitude and approach to new ideas, issues, and complaints raised by council members. Once again, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, zero unsatisfactory. On number four, the average score is a two point oh. Comments on that particular item indicate as follows. My calls and messages often go unreturned. I have not been provided with regular updates and am not informed about current or critical issues facing the city of Florisville. I continue to be very worried about our roads, our parks, the cemetery, about issues with Hartland, and have received no updates from the CM regarding my concerns. Moving on to number five, community relations. Makes an effort to understand general community issues and concerns. Remains involved and active in the community. Represents the city well and in a professional and positive manner. Works proactively with the media and press. Works effectively with community organizations and other agencies. Educates the community on city goals and services. Once again, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, zero unsatisfactory. On number five, the average score is a two point eight. Comments from the council. The city manager has done a decent job. However, I believe that she needs improvement in educating the community on city goals and services. More communication is needed between the city and the citizens of Florisville. Moving on to number six. Six deals with communications. Ensures the city that council members receive important information in a timely and effective manner. Presents the council and community with clear and accurate written reports and correspondence. Response to correspondence, requests, and complaints quickly and appropriately. Facilitates open, two-way communication and encourages mutual honesty and respect with the community, council, and staff. Possible score, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, zero unsatisfactory. On number six, the average score on that one is a one point eight. Council comments. Finance issues should have been handled in a better manner. Also, event center oversight. Building has a lot more potential. Staff needs leadership. City manager needs improvement in this area. Unfortunately, oftentimes, I have read about issues regarding the city on Facebook and not from the city manager. Also, my complaints and concerns have been unanswered. Also, my complaints and concerns have gone unanswered. Need to improve on communication with council. Inquiries are made, and there is little to no follow-up in the status of such inquiry. Number seven deals with leadership. Provides the council and the organization with real solutions and creative alternatives to issues and problems. Anticipates in response to issues. Assures that council decisions are thought out, objective, consistent with past practices and are legal and ethical. Makes use of sound administrative practices. Leads the organization through effective management of people and tasks. Possible score, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, zero unsatisfactory. On number seven, the average score on that one is a 1.8. Comments on number seven indicate as follows, and I will have to look through those because I did not finish talking all those comments. Finance issues should have been handled in a better manner. Also, okay, I think I already read this one, has a lot more potential in staffing and leadership. That's the number seven. Okay. Needs to let supervisors work with their teams. Leads staff with positivity. Staff have felt leadership does not build on skills of staff members. Staff needs to know they will have manager support. And that's the last one on that one. Okay, moving on to number eight, professionalism. Deals effectively and appropriately with the public and other organization. Devotes time and energy to the job. Demonstrates high ethical standards in the organization. Works to keep politics and personal perspectives out of the decision-making process. Stays active in professional organizations and regional issues. Possible score, six outstanding, five excellent, four very good, three good, two fair, one poor, zero unsatisfactory. On this one, the average score was a 3.0. Council comments regarding professionalism in one moment. No comments on that one. Okay. Achievements. Says, identify a few of the top achievements or strong points to observe in the city manager over the past year, and I'm going to go over those comments. Greater grants that help our city, exclamation point. I believe that Henrietta has done a good job on trying to get grant money for the city. Grants, working with congressman's office. Objectives. List two to three performance objectives which you feel are important for the city manager to work on for the coming year. Comments. Strive to create better financial accountability. Answering phone calls to community at all times. Make your own decisions and not let, not let staff dictate what is right for our city. My concern is the condition of our streets, our parks, the cemetery, Hartland, and the finances of the city. It is my belief that there needs to be immediate improvement in communicating with the council, with supervising personnel, with better supervision and updates on budget issues. Financial management, leadership to develop leaders within staff. And that's the last of it. That was it, ma'am. Those are all the comments with each section, and I've read them.
Mrs. Turner, do you want to share more? Do we need to take return of executive session since we didn't go into executive?
No, ma'am, you do not. Since we did not go into executive session, there is no need for any.
Okay. All right, that was item 4A and B, and there is no other business on the agenda, so at 6:36, this meeting is adjourned.